Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plains City Council Meeting. It is Monday, July 24th. It is 7:05. My apologies for the light start. We just came from our workshop. Please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Cahill.
I'll second that.
Seconded by DeLuca. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to welcome Orano School Board Member Bob Tunheim.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bob, if you weren't mine going to the microphone, then you'll be recorded.
Yeah.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for inviting me to the meeting tonight. This is, I think, the second time I have been able to come to a Maple Plains City Council meeting. And I would like to try to, as mentioned last time, I'd like to try to do this on at least an annual basis, make sure that we continue our excellent relationship with the city of Maple Plains, and to make sure we inform each other on things of mutual interest, most notably the education of our school kids. So, tonight, I'd like to walk you through what we've approved at the school board as the design of the new Activity Center. It's called Orano Activity Center for purposes of this, but we're still open to potential names for the facility. So, as you can see, it basically will take up the space between the existing high school and the stadium, kind of connecting the current gymnasium to the west. So, with that, let's just flip through this. We went through, I thought, a very successful process of engaging community members. There were, I think, 28 community members selected to serve on a task force to help design what the community wanted out of this facility after we had successfully passed the referendum by 12 votes out of about 8,000 casts. So, it was a very, very tight race, but nonetheless, it came out on the positive side. And what we ended up defining was a five-station fieldhouse with a walking track, a fitness center for use by the community, separate fitness center for the high school athletes, which would be the weight room here, athletic, new athletic locker rooms, community locker rooms, some flexible classrooms. What is not mentioned there is a 200-meter indoor running track that will have a little different surface to it than the rest of the fieldhouse. They'll be linking existing, it will link the existing game gymnasium with the new Activity Center. There'll be new bathrooms to serve both the stadium on that end and the, and other bathrooms near the game gymnasium. And then, a couple of things in a little different font at the bottom there that we're still considering whether we'll have a new athletics/performing arts entry where the current entry is to the game gymnasium, and whether we would renovate existing locker rooms. That'll depend on how the bids come in. Next page. So, the design criteria that we came up with was to provide a school-centric collaborative learning space that's accessible to the public, and as many community functions as possible should be at one level, the walking track level. Student-based activities would be at the fieldhouse level, and you'll see those different levels as we go here. It would be a single event entry but separate student and community entries during school hours, so that we paid very close attention to elements of safety that are more and more important in our school campuses. Activity Center had to be multipurpose to accommodate a wide range of activities. Master planned for all the rest of our campus, including stadium parking, possible future auditorium, and other foreseeable needs. And we wanted an open atmosphere during typical usage, large windows for daylight and views, and secureable, as I mentioned earlier. So, flip to the next slide, and you'll see a schematic of the site plan. You'll note over there, "Future Plaza." We're doing sort of preliminary design of that, hoping that the bids come in low enough to be able to fund that. If not, we will have at least planned for it for the future. And that would be a nice new entryway to the stadium and place for concessions and that sort of thing. Flip to the next page, and you'll see the existing main level. Flip to the next page, and that shows what will be the new main level. So, this would be, this would connect to the mezzanine that goes around the existing gym, and we'll be adding new bleachers on the north end of that, so it'll have bleachers on both sides, which we've been missing since the building was built in the, back in the Flip to the next page, and it shows the Activity Center entry, and this is where the community will, this is the sort of main area for the community. You'll walk in, there'll be offices to the left for security purposes, concessions to the right as you walk in, and then after you get past the check-in desk, you can go to the fitness center. There'll be a few offices there for community ed, community lockers, and then two flexible community spaces, essentially classrooms, and for use with, you know, classes and yoga classes, stuff like that. Then the other side, there'll be a couple of classrooms that will be used by the school. On that level is the walking track that we believe will be very heavily used by the community. Flip to the next page, and you can see the fieldhouse level. So, that's the sort of ground level, which will be below existing grade for the gymnasium. And you see there, we've got the weight room, some storage, and then very large new team locker space. And toilets on the west end, so they'll be usable for people at the football games and soccer games and lacrosse games in the stadium. The next page shows the existing building. After that, it's the, a shot of the new facility tacked on to the existing building. Next page shows a schematic of the Activity Center entrance. It'll be on the south side. Next page shows a little bit different view of that same level. And the next one shows the west end with a future plaza by the stadium. You'll note that there's a wall of windows there, and then some cantilevered devices to keep the, keep the sun from directly coming into the eyes of people that might be participating in something on the, on one of the sport, on one of the courts there. Next page shows the north connection to the existing building, and you see how the grade goes down toward the stadium there. Next one is some interior materials, not too terribly interesting. The next one, though, shows the Activity Center entry. You'll see above there the mezzanine level that will connect with the mezzanine around the gym, and you see also the check-in desk there off to the left. Next slide shows main circulation, and the next one shows views into the fieldhouse from that circulation. You see the walking track at that level through those windows there. And then, Community Fitness Room is on the next slide. The next one is another shot of that fitness room, and then the next couple of slides show the walking track, or I guess it's just the next one. And then, another one is down at the fieldhouse level, looking west through that wall of windows. And the next one is at the fieldhouse, looking east from the end toward the stadium. And finally, lower-level lobby on the north side, and main-level north lobby on the next page. Finally, main-level balcony looking north and looking south. So, the final page shows a project timeline that's been altered just a little bit. I think we are now planning a groundbreaking later on in August, because we, one of the steps that is shown in there are the city council approval. That has now been, I believe they've, they have changed an ordinance so that we do not require approval from the city of Orano, so we can begin sooner than that. However, we have, I think that the thought is that we would go a little bit later in the fall to get bids. It might be a little bit better time to get bids, and so occupancy by October 31st may be a little aggressive, but we hope to be in sometime the fourth quarter of 2018. So, if anybody has any questions on that, I'd be happy to handle them. Just a couple of other highlights I'd like to, I'd like to raise for the council's benefit. One of, one of them is just to point out one of the ways that we have worked together with your community, and that is the Sparks After School Program. And what a success that has been. We're very appreciative to the community church here in town and all the volunteers from the community that come and work with our at-risk kids, and the program is making a difference. It is really helping out the kids that come a couple times a week and just get help with their homework after school, and so appreciative to the community for doing that. It's part of our Great Expectations Initiative with the IOCP, and we're really, I think, using that program to face some challenges, particularly with our diverse and lower-income folks in the district really head-on. So, very proud of those efforts and really appreciative for the partnership with the community of Maple Plains and its citizens to help us out with that. I also wanted to update you a little bit on strategic planning. We do five-year strategic planning, and we're in the midst of a new plan right now, and the group that got together and met on this has agreed that the three pillars that we've kind of had for the last five-year plan are going to remain intact for the next five years, and that's academics, relationships, and character. And we have many different action plans underneath all of those that are really, really make me proud to be a part of the Orano School District. It's not all about academics. It's not all about activities. It's a, it's a very well-rounded approach to educating our students, and I'm very proud of that. Another thing, obviously, we're partnering on is this building, and we're continuing to spend money to upgrade it and maintain it, and we greatly appreciate Maple Plains' partnership with this building as well. So, with that, I would entertain any questions and also let you know that I'm available anytime for questions or concerns or issues that you feel like the school board should be made aware of. Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
I appreciated that you mentioned the performing arts entryway might be done.
Yeah.
Do you know, is there a performing arts center? Is that on the radar or on the timeline?
It's on the radar. It's not, basically, we are, the foundation is soliciting donations from people in the community, and we hope to do that with private funds. And at this point, it's, it's still a ways off, I think, but it's, it's part of our master plan going forward, and we will hopefully be able to raise the funds privately to get that paid for.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come here. All right.
All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes accounts payable, June 26, 2017 city council regular meeting minutes, June 26 city council workshop minutes, city administrator salary increase, pay request number four Bud Avenue utility and street improvements, and July 10, city council workshop minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Seconded by Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to administrative reports, we'll start with our city engineer, Dan Boyan.
Thank you, mayor and council. In your packet, you have our monthly update, and some of the highlights of that are Bud Avenue improvements. We worked with the contractor on the next payment request number four, which is being processed tonight. Well, number four, we received the bids this morning for the project, and we'll be talking about that later on in the meeting. Parkview Road, Drain Town, and Maple Ridge Drive settlements, that item, we attended a public gathering on July 19th and then updated some of the spreadsheets based on those discussions, and that'll be talked about also later tonight. Capital Improvement Plan, we attended your last work session as well as your work session earlier tonight to sort through some of the, some of the various proposed projects that are being looked at in the next, what is it, next 13 years? Give or take. And so, we got some good feedback from the council earlier tonight that we'll bring back to an upcoming meeting. And with that, we can answer any questions on our monthly report.
Any questions for engineer? All right. Looking for a motion to accept the city engineer's monthly report.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Seconded by Broda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next, we'll turn to our city planner, Markles.
Honorable mayor, council, just to report from the last month, for July, we had the Joint Planning Commission city council meeting to discuss the 2040 comprehensive plan, talked about that process, and then also discussed the community survey, which we're putting together. As it relates to other meetings, had a staff meeting as well, or I attended one of the staff meetings, as well as met with the city and the potential developer of the 1425 Baker Park property. We continue to have discussions on that property. Also, I didn't want to leave it out of this packet, had the 1675 Spring Avenue. I actually met with a developer who I think is going to buy that property if he doesn't already have a purchase agreement on it. He's actually looking at multifamily residential on that property, which would be probably not a bad use considering the surrounding land uses as well as the location, so stay tuned for that. And then, I also had a meeting with the owner of the 1800 Pioneer Creek Center to discuss possible development options. He's got nothing present or pending, but he wanted to get his arms around what his next couple of years looked like as it related to some of the lease agreements he has on that property, and then what possibilities he would have to develop additional property within that property and/or redevelop a portion of the existing buildings on that property. So, that one, we may have more discussions on that coming up. Outside of that, I also did have correspondence relating to some potential or possible uses for a Main Street East property, talked to a couple of appraisers that were doing work on a couple of our commercial properties. There's a couple of properties that are kind of like in the market right now. I don't know if they're all commercially or officially listed, but I know I've been getting some calls on a couple of properties on Main Street as well as on Bud Street. And then, I also did talk to, and did set up a meeting actually finally today with a property owner on Mars Street about their use of the property, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mark, what is the next step with the comp plan? What will be the next thing the public can?
The community survey will be the next step.
And what's our timeline on that?
I believe that you'll see the community survey at your next meeting, and then we'll get that out to the public in August for their responses, so.
Any other questions for our planner? Looking for a motion to accept the city planner's July report.
So moved.
Moved by Fay. Looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next, we'll have our West Hennepin Public Safety Report, and I will turn that over to Chief.
Honorable mayor and council members, including in your packet is the June activity report for West Hennepin. In that, through that month, we've handled 4,214 incidents, 1,587 in Maple Plains and 2,310 in Independence. I've highlighted a few cases for you. I won't go through each and every one, but I'll speak about a few. On June 6th, we did get a solicitor complaint in the 6,400 block of Hillstrom Road in Independence, and this is, also occurs in Maple Plains as well. I just want to reach out to the residents and the businesses that it is illegal to go around soliciting for services unless you have a permit from the city. In this particular case, they did not, and they were cited for that offense. That is very common to go around for, to solicit business, not for the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts or other organizations like that, or, but when you're going around trying to get business of tree trimming or roofs, especially with storm season, you need to have a permit to do that, and there's a process for it. On June 11th, we did have a Sunday morning storm event that came through from the west, obviously where they typically come from through Independence and then into Maple Plains. Maple Plains survives with very few incidents of power lines or trees down. I just wanted to commend the Public Works staff and the Maple Plains Fire Department for working with us. Myself, Sergeant Dennison, and the rest of our officers came in as soon as that storm came through. We were kind of seeing it coming, and we just quickly assessed with the Public Works and our staff to go around and make sure the roads were open, people were safe with wires. There were quite a few trees down, wires down, that aren't in this report because it just got repetitive for that day. There was about 16 incidents, I believe, and we just went around, made sure they were as safe as we could, contacted the power companies, put police tape, "Do not cross cones" around, and then we just opened up the street. So, that was a good, a good event to kind of work together and just test all our skills with our radios and working together on that. On June 16th, we did have the 1,300 block of Bud Avenue. We had, one of the businesses reported five of their heavier trucks had batteries stolen out of them, approximately $1,000 loss in that case. As you note through your report, you'll see other theft from autos throughout the Independence area as well. Just a reminder for our citizens, lock your doors, don't have any valuables in your car or around your car, and understand that there are criminals out there that do want to prey on you, making the mistake of leaving valuables in your car, and they will break windows or they will make entry if you do not lock them up or put them away. So, bring them in the house with you, and it's much safer that way than leaving them in your vehicle. As you saw in the news, you saw some reports kind of around the western inner metro, Golden Valley, St. Louis Park, Hopkins, there has been a rash of people, you know, leaving your vehicles outside, and you have a garage door opener in your vehicle, so they break into your vehicle, push your garage door opener button to get into your garage and into your home. We haven't had any of those, but just be aware that that is a trend that's, that's always been out there, but just seems to be on the rise around us at this point. On June 21st, we had an interesting personal injury, property damage crash. The crosswalk at Highway 12 near the library at Bud, somebody pushed the button to cross over, and the person stopped like they're supposed to, and a motorcyclist wasn't paying attention and rear-ended the vehicle. It is not often that a motorcycle rear-ends another car, so that person was checked out by the ambulance to paramedics. He had some minor injuries, but he refused to go to the hospital. We also had another crash on June 24th on the 1,200 block of County Road 83 or Holgren Road. A southbound vehicle was coming into Maple Plains, and the driver simply fell asleep right into the ditch and struck a, struck a sign, a frontier phone line, a cable guide, and, and some trees. So, pretty interesting case in Maple Plains in that 30 zone, but it does happen. People are falling asleep behind the wheel as well, making it dangerous for others. And then, another great teamwork effort with, with our Public Works and showing how our Public Works and the police can communicate on the radio systems. We had in UTV, so those kind of those side-by-side, I don't want to say Polaris Rangers, I'm not sure that's the right style, but it's a Ranger-type vehicle, started doing donuts in your Northside Park gravel parking lot, and was just causing a lot of dust, a lot of commotion. Public Works happened to be driving by at the time. They got on their radios, was able to get ahold of one of our officers and follow the vehicle into Independence, and we did locate the kids, roughly 15-years-old, contacted the parents, and this is kind of the small-town police department, working with our local citizens. The officers told the kids, "Per the parents, go in the house, get the rakes." We escorted the kids back to Northside Park, and we supervised them raking up the gravel parking lot until it was to our liking, and then the parents took over the punishment after that when we, we got home. We didn't issue a citation. We warned them for their, for their behavior, but I think we handled it that way, and I think it has more of an impact than writing them a ticket for, for something on that, so. And then, on June 30th, on 1,200 block of Bud Street, we did get a mini-storage Facility welfare check on a female who may, who they believe is living in the storage unit. Excuse me. I know of at least four calls myself that we keep getting called there. She says she's not living in the storage unit, and she's just checking on her property. It could go either way, but at this point, she's, we're keeping an eye on it and making sure that she's not living in that storage facility and has a place to live. So, I would answer any questions that you may have, and then I will say that it was a great event on July 12th. The first Maple Plains event was extremely fun. I thought I did an exceptional job of pitching. I must say, if you didn't notice, the police won. And then, just on a side note, I did strike out the entire McCoy family. I don't know if you caught on to that, but the chief and the former police chief, and then my buddy, J. McCoy. So, it was a great event, and thank you for letting us be a part of it, and we hope that it continues and that trophy's wrestling, resting nicely at our police department.
We would thank you for being humble and not bringing the trophy, but I don't think that would be appropriate any longer.
I think we were actually expecting you to bring it.
I think it was. I was like, hmm. And thanks for leaving the hair at home.
Okay.
Yeah. In all seriousness, does anyone have any questions for the police chief with regards to the report? All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion to accept the West Hennepin Public Safety July report.
So moved.
Moved by Broda.
Second.
Seconded by Cahill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Continuing on, our city administration July monthly report.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Public Works has been busy in the month of July. They've repaired some street signs along Highway 12. That was an issue. They've been working with Dan in StanTech with putting together some of the areas on Maple Ridge Drive and Parkview Road that you're going to see later on in the meeting tonight. They did some preparation for the fire department and police department softball game. They've been cleaning up the water treatment plant. They had a recycle tank that they had to go and actually manually go in and clean, which is unfortunate when that happens, but positive news out of that is that the city successfully passed the radium water test, which has been an issue for the city in the past. Nothing ever concerning, but higher than it should be. Since we passed that test, the city's no longer mandated to have their radium tested quarterly. Our actual next radium test will be in three years, so that's a good improvement there. They've also been working, the Rainbow Picnic, Rainbow Park picnic area was regraded with classified rock, and they cleaned up some vandalism that happened at Northside Park concession stand. Oddly enough, either last week or two weeks ago, someone burned like a actual leather briefcase. So, it was kind of an odd anomaly. I don't know what it was. I know that West Hennepin was brought in on it. Maybe that'll be in the report next month. I don't know. But I know that it was kind of an odd thing that happened that they took care of there. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of Public Works.
Is that the second time we've had vandalism at Northside?
Yeah. It's a little bit different. Earlier this year, someone broke into, not the concession stand, but kind of where we hold some of our, our supplies for, you know, softball games. We also had some scooters, and that was broken into earlier this year. And then, this year, just a random, nothing was broken into that we saw, but just someone randomly burned a briefcase right next to the concession stand, so it doesn't really add up, but we'll leave that to the investigators.
All right. Are we approving these together? All right. Are we motion, approving these together or separate?
You can do them individually. That'd be great.
Looking for a motion to approve the Public Works monthly report.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have the Administration, Administrative Report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This month, City Administration has been working on, we attended a few community public meetings. We've been working with the Fire Department on personnel policies. Staff has been working on multiple economic development projects throughout town. Staff has been communicating, preparing for the two remaining Maple Plain Day events. I would echo some of the things that we've heard tonight. That July 12th was a really good success, and I'm, I'm really happy. It sounded like the community had a good time, and, and that was good. Staff has also been preparing for the 2018 budget that is coming up. Our entering budget season, get excited. And then we're having also, staff recently held a public gathering for the Maple Ridge Drive and Parkview Road project that will be discussed later on tonight. And staff also attended a INI grant information session that would be for any INI projects that we take on the city's behalf. So, our own infrastructure, there's a grant out by Met Council that would give us some reimbursement dollars if we are awarded some grant money from them. So, at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that City Council may have regarding City Administration.
Any questions? All right. Looking for a motion to approve the July City Administration Administrative Report.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on, Quarter Two Financial Report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Going through our financial report at this time, I just want to make one note before we get into this. The first thing is, is that sent out in the packet was not only the financial report, but also the expenditure and revenue reports. And if you look and you really follow the expenditure and revenue reports, they don't exactly add up, and there's a reason behind that. And that is, is that we have dollars that are getting transferred out of accounts, so they're not tangible dollars so much for that account. What I mean by that is that in our expenditures, in our general fund, we transfer out well over $200,000. So, I don't look at that as dollars that we're spending out of the general fund. Those are being moved to a different fund. So, if you look at kind of the layout that I brought here, that's a more accurate depiction of the city's spending. I could have left the transfer dollars in there, and it'd actually probably look a lot better, but I want to give the most accurate report to City Council on where our finances are at. And so, if you look at our general fund, we've used about 51% of it at this time, and in my notes, previously I'd mentioned that, you know, we had some legal services that were up higher, just due to the nature of some of the projects we've been working on this year. That has required some additional legal attention, as well as some training that we did with staff to work on some financial aspects and our auditing. Outside of that, we had a building, building fees that were higher in Quarter One. That's kind of leveled out a little bit in, in Quarter Two, which is a good sign, but those two are still kind of my primary concerns out of the general fund at this time. Looking at the Community Events Fund, you can see we actually did spend some money in the second quarter, just a little bit of dollars, and that's primarily for the three activities that were going on this summer. We are not going to be spending anywhere near the $25,000 margin that you see budgeted there. That was originally intended for a full-on Maple Plain Days event for this summer. Obviously, that did not happen this year, and we're putting on three smaller events. Because of that, I, I would not expect that that goes up a whole lot more than where it's at at that expenditure at this time. If you look at the Water Fund, actually the Water Sewer, Stormwater Funds, they're actually, we're below our expenditures at this point, which is a really good sign. There's some work that, there's some projects that are going to be coming up that, that could take some money from that, but right now, we're in really good shape with those funds, and Fire's doing a good job as well. They've got some bigger expenditures coming up too in the second half of the year, but they're in financially good shape. So, that's good at this point, but as we go on to Quarter Three and Quarter Four, we'll learn additional information about these things. I noticed on some of the actual revenue portion of it, I, oh no, it's, it's right, right here. So, on our revenue, if you look at our expenditure revenue, or our revenue report, not expenditure, it shows that we really have about 6% of our revenues in. Part of that's just timing of how this report's generated, and then the ACH transfer payments that the city receives. So, the city actually has received 70% of our taxes this year. It just doesn't show up in our system yet because we're closing out months yet that we've received it. And also, we've received half of our LGA funds. So, really, instead of about 6%, we're actually closer to 70% of our revenues have been captured this year, which is a really good deal. I just, I know that that's kind of a scary number when you see 6% and we're in July. That's never a good deal. Our Water Fund is, our Water Sewer and Stormwater Funds are actually where they're supposed to be. I know that they look, again, low because we're halfway through the year, and they're not at 50%. That's because some of, some tax dollars go to these funds as well that we collect, and that should put us up right around that 50%. So, right now, we're in, we're in good shape on the revenue side, and our expense side, with the exception of our general fund, which I believe we're doing a little bit better job at the end of first quarter. I think we're at 27.5%. Right now, we're at 51, so trying to get that under budget is kind of our objective moving forward, but otherwise, we're in pretty good shape, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the finances of the city.
I have a question, Bobby.
Yeah.
The year-to-date, is this through June 30th, or is this actually through this part of July, the 51%?
Some of it is through July. Yep. Yep.
So, we're theoretically looking at seven of the 12 months instead of six of the 12 months?
Correct. Yep. Granted, I know that we do have some bigger ticket expenditures coming up, so just be mindful of that too, but we're gonna, our goal is to stay underneath budget, so.
Bobby, I was tracking the labor dollars, and when I add up, like, the Public Works, it looks like we're tracking a little over the 50%, somewhere in the 56, 57 range. Is that accounted for just more overtime than you anticipated? Because you'd think these labor budgets would be relatively predictable.
Yeah, there could be two things. One, I know there's been a little bit of overtime, but nothing like crazy, crazy out there. The other part is that their funds are allocated through multiple different accounts. So, where it might be high there, I know it's lower in some other areas, so it's, we're not necessarily paying more dollars to our Public Works than we should be. There has been a little bit of overtime, but nothing drastic by any chance, but overall, we should, we're in good shape there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Administrator? All right. Looking for a motion to approve our Quarter Two Financial Report.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Broda, second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion carries. Having no old business, we don't have a public hearing. Moving on to new business, review and discuss utility billing process.
So, last month, I had brought to you guys a comparison of cost analysis between monthly and quarterly utility billing, and based on some feedback, you guys wanted a more formal proposal that comes to City Council, and then there was also discussion on e-billing, so I followed up on those two items. First, for e-billing, I had just talked to our utility billing software and our online payment service provider, and we actually are set up, surprisingly, we're set up for both of them right now, so after talking to them, it's actually enabled to go at any time. So, I think that it's in our interest to set up these services. It's basically allowing residents to view all their bills online, get bills emailed to them instead of in the mail. There's an opt-out option, and then they can also look at their statements for the last couple of years as well. And you can also add a PDF document onto the bill, so this is an opportunity for us to utilize an e-newsletter as well. So, having the same, you know, for those mailed out and electronic, and it would save us money because I see as we would market this, more people would go to an electronic option. So, that is my recommendation, that we start, you know, making that available for people and advertising that, getting that out there. It's something that we have, and we're just not using. Then I broke it down into, you know, if we wanted to do monthly versus quarterly. So, I kind of broke it down into three options. Option one, monthly to quarterly entirely. And this is just, you know, saying that the options, we looked at the costs last time, but we could, I mean, if we decided tonight to go to quarterly, we'd have a few months to get out there, get the word out there, and then we could add on a, you know, some type of monthly or weekly e-blast in addition to our quarterly newsletter. So, that is the first option. The section, second option is having both of them just be monthly, and as we covered last time, the intent was, you know, more frequent communication with residents and businesses, and kind of we covered last time too. With by going to monthly, we wanted to decrease late payments, or, you know, delinquent payments, but we haven't really been seeing that. But you could add on a more robust quarterly newsletter in the future if that was something desired. And then, option three was a mixed option. I just looked, looking into this, you know, if we wanted to have a newsletter electronically and using that e-billing service that we have, it doesn't make sense to do a quarterly newsletter and a monthly bill, then we wouldn't be utilizing that to, you know, to the best of our advantage, which is kind of why an option, you know, I've added some supplemental, you know, e-blasts or newsletter options if we wanted to add that on to the future. So, I didn't really look into the, too much that further, but more, I'm just, again, with that new information I updated you with, just looking for some feedback and seeing if it switches what we want, or... So, yeah, if there's any questions or comments, or...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I was actually surprised, Nicole, to see you presenting these options when, at the workshop, we had talked about going to a quarterly, and you were supposed to figure out the logistics and timing of that. Now, you have that in here, but I'm sorry if there was a miss, at least my understanding was we were, wanted to go along the quarterly lines.
We had also asked for e-billing as well.
Right, the e-billing option part of that. So, good work on getting that piece. I certainly think I'm back at going to a quarterly basis for these, particularly when I'm looking at a $10,000 documented savings a year to change from monthly to quarterly. I would disagree with you, though, in the terms of the cycle that it takes to get to that. I think we're sitting in July. We do a July, an August, a September, and then you shoot the next one in January for the quarterly bill. So, I think we're far enough still in our cycle that we can get to a quarterly bill at the end of this year.
Sure. I, I guess, just my thought on that is, you know, that it not between, being too far away. Why not start with the new year? It could be a little bit campaigned better that way, but certainly, it's not unfeasible to move it faster.
I think with the amount of savings, and then we also consider in there the staff time where we talked about, you know, 32 hours of Public Works staff, 120 hours administrative time, that's over 150 hours. So, I think the sooner we can get there while communicating in advance.
Well, I, I think what'll help with the transition too is that if we are still doing a monthly newsletter for a couple months yet, before we get into that, we can use that opportunity to communicate. Having a electronic newsletter, we can still do a quarterly newsletter, but it still also provides the option for an e-blast in addition to this. So, I think, I think that we can make this happen by the end of, end of the third quarter here, get set up for quarterly into the fourth quarter, and send those bills out in July, and still effectively communicate as a council goal through e-blasts and our quarterly newsletters that we'd be doing to our residents and businesses.
Madam Mayor? Yes. That's a member Cahill.
I, I love the idea of the e-billing, especially since we're already paying for it. So, if you can create something that can get people on board with that, I mean, that would be awesome to see, whether it's Facebook or through our newsletters. The more people can convince that, maybe we can go back to monthly, because then it'll, everyone will be electronic, but I think, in the meantime, I agree with quarterly.
I had a kind of a technological question here. Are you positive that you can get the newsletters into a megabyte or less if there's images and stuff? I know PDF skills everything down, but is that...
I, I think that was also kind of the part of the reason my recommendation was to go with monthly, was because, you know, through that electronic system, yeah, you can do some reducing, but it's not going to be as a robust quarterly newsletter as that I was communicated as what was wanted last time. So, I think that might be a slight issue there.
Well, I, I think even if it's not a four-page newsletter, even if it's a one-page e-blast, we can do multiple e-blasts in that deal, and that's how we curve some of that.
And there's no size restriction on the e-blasts?
Well, the e-blast is that one, the space, I know you had mentioned it, Nicole.
So, yep, it's a, through the utility billing, it's one megabyte, but you can, I mean, I had, just in this experiment, I took our July newsletter and, you know, resized it down, and I got that under a megabyte.
What was the quality like on it?
It looked, it looked fine, yeah.
I know you can get a lot into a PDF, but...
Yeah.
So, just to be clear, then I'm understanding that e-blast is the actual attachment onto the bill?
Well, we could, I guess, if, my thoughts would be if we were to do quarterly billing, that, I mean, you can only send out in blast through the utility billing when you send out a utility bill. So, that would be quarterly. Then we could do some other service. I know the website has some capabilities I could look into more.
And that'd be the email marketing?
Or, otherwise, you can go with like a, you know, a MailChimp, or there's other services.
There's no size restrictions on the emails?
Right. Those you design yourself and...
Right, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
There's just a, there's a way that we can do quarterly billing and save our costs on doing that with the goal of communicating and having that electronic component in there. That would be efficient and still cover objectives. The only downside to this is when you go to some electronic communication is that not everybody's going to be signed up for it. So, you're going to get your quarterly bills and newsletters out, you're going to send out half of those electronically hopefully, and then you're going to have some paper ones still, but when you're trying to bridge the gap from the first month of the quarter to the last month of the quarter, you're going to be doing the electronic component of that. So, there are going to be some residents at this point that, and businesses that won't be getting that, but also, at the same time, we got to advertise and get as many email addresses as possible so that when we do send them out electronically, that we are communicating with as many people as possible. It's, it's, it's a, that's where we're at at this point.
I think it's important that we use all of the venues we have for communication within the city, but I'd also like to see us make sure we get this in the Pioneer Newspaper as a press release from the city, so that way, for people who aren't getting city stuff, including businesses, then they'll at least hopefully have the opportunity to see it in what is our newspaper.
Yeah, absolutely, and in addition to that, because we are still monthly for the next two months, this will be advertised, gets to every business and every resident as well, in addition to the paper press release. I think we can cover this pretty well and get this transition moving.
Yeah, but I just actually reached out to our contact at the paper today, introduced myself, so they're squared away. But that's perfect.
Now, do we need to bring this to a vote?
You know, I, I do think it would be a good topic to vote on, just because it is a change that affects the entire community from where we're at right now. I, I do think that would be a good, good item to vote on since it's been brought up tonight.
I'm about to make a motion, but before I do that, I just have a... Just one quick, just clarification here. If, if we do approve to go towards quarterly utility billing, make sure we communicate to the residents that they do have the option to still pay in installments ahead of time.
Correct.
So, just break down, and, you know, if they're, if they're over, there'd be a credit. If they're under, they just have to make up the rest on the last month and actually get their bill, so just that people still have that option. But I do, I do make the motion that we move towards... But I do, I do make the motion that we move towards quarterly utility billing and enhance our presence electronically. Is that a good motion?
Digital presence.
Maybe, maybe we need a wordsmith to that motion, but hopefully you caught the spirit of it, so.
So, we have a motion on the table from Councilmember Broda, going to quarterly billing and enhance our online opportunities. Not verbatim, but looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Fay, any discussion?
A point of, point of clarification. Looking at, are we agreeing that we try to do this in the third, the fourth quarter of 2017? And then, if we look at it, that we've been printing and mailing X number, I would view anything that is electronic as a gift at this point. With the movement over time, that eventually you could get to a larger and larger audience that's electronic. But if half of them end up being electronic, that's half of them you got to print and put a stamp on.
And I just want to make a comment too, because we spent quite a bit of time on this in the last, and we understood that there's a, there's a cost savings component which we're all in favor of. We also understand that the electronic communication component is, is what we're, the communication that we're losing, so there's got to be a balance, so I think we have to make sure that the citizenry is, is over electronically communicated with. I mean, we need to go above and beyond to try to, you know, that's, that's the benefit of the cost savings.
One more point of clarification for the residents is that everything's going to continue as paper until they actually opt out, correct?
Correct.
So, they need to make that decision.
They will physically have to sign up.
Right.
Correct.
In the yearly, which is under business. Good discussion, any further discussion? All right, with that, looking, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on, bids for well number four, pump and connection, and we'll turn that over to Engineer Decker.
Did you send this out digitally by chance?
Uh, yes. Should all be in the packet. Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, oh, no, that was done this morning at 10:00 AM here in our offices.
It's not in the packet, though, it was being done today.
Yep. So, for time consideration, this was talked about last meeting with City Council here, and then was also in the packet.
Because of the timeline, we didn't have a choice.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this morning, we had, or opened the bids for the well number four pump and treatment plant connection project. There were eight general contractors or lease that were listed as plan holders. Three of them submitted bids. The three bids that were received were from, the low bidder was Municipal Builders Incorporated at $208,500. And then the number two and number three bidders, Pember Companies and American Liberty, were very close to each other, around $233.6 and $238.9. The low bidder, $208,500 from Municipal Builders, compares to our engineer's opinion of probable cost of around $200,000. The bids have been reviewed and found to be in order. So, we had that item on your agenda, and we also had the item from the control and software updates that we talked about at your last council meeting. I think at that meeting in June, the council had asked for just some more clarification from Public Works and maybe Ryan Capell as to some of the other software improvements that were done in the past. And so, we have that kind of listed under the facts section, but in general, the software at the water treatment plant where the Public Works is looking at getting these upgrades was originally bid in like 2007 and put into, into service in 2008. There was some Surface Pro-type unit that was bought around five years ago, is what Public Works had said, and that was something, and also some of your meter reading equipment, but that equipment is like totally separate from use at the water treatment plant. The project is anticipated to be completed November 2017. We have worked with Municipal Builders Incorporated in the past, and we had heard from the number of questions they had during the bid process that they were looking for work, and I think that's why their project bid price came in less than those other two bidders. So, with that, we can open it up for questions by the council.
Were you happy with receiving three out of the eight?
Well, I was, I was talking with Nicole earlier that it's nice to have three because sometimes, especially with those, you know, if we just had the two, number two and three bid, and you didn't have that third one to kind of like break the tie to see if you...